It is 6:30 and we appreciate everyone being present tonight for this, our county council meeting. Mr. Darby has asked for a point of personal privilege. Mr. Darby.
Well, yes, sir. I just wanted to apologize for those who are watching particularly online, in particular if my students are watching. I'm not properly dressed this afternoon and at North Charleston High School, I run a very tight ship in how my kids dress. So if they see me up here without a shirt tied, my students, I apologize. I'm just leaving work. So please forgive me. Thank you very much, sir.
We say to you, tighten up, Mr. Darby.
I will, sir.
It is Tuesday. So tonight, we will be led in prayer by Chaplain Gould from Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy and the pledge will be by Caitlin Brunson from the Master and Equity Office and a member of the current Emerging Leaders Program cohort.
Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give each council member wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the item that is before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In your name we ask. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much. And again, we welcome all of you here to our county council meeting. Again, to our council members, thank you for being here this evening. Good evening, Ms. Honeycutt, to our administrator, our clerk, our attorney. We're ready to get to business. At this time, we will have our public hearings.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding a proposed change, the proposed Orange Hill Development Agreement by and among Kiowa Resort Associates and Charleston County and a request to rezone TMS numbers 21500030163 and 120 from PD-83A and AG-8 zoning districts to the Orange Hill Plan Development PD-191 zoning district.
Do we have anyone signed up? Or do we have a presentation? Okay.
So the subject parcels are located on Johns Island between River Road and Bow Hicket Road. This is the map of the location of the parcels. The total development is 933.097 acres with approximately 718 highland acres and 427 acres of wetland. Parcel 120, the conservancy tract, has a de-restriction that only allows the development of a single-family structure. The three subject parcels were zoned AG upon adoption of the zoning standards in November of 2001. The subject properties were rezoned to AG-8. In 2002, County Council approved the Orange Hill Plan Development PD-83 with the following allowances: 181 single-family residences, 420 acres of open space, which included a golf course, minimum lot sizes of 20,000 square feet, a wastewater treatment facility, and main access from Bow Hicket Road. In 2005, County Council approved to amend the PD to PD-83A, which allowed a decrease in the minimum lot area from 20,000 to 15,000 square feet and to add a reverse osmosis plant as an allowed use. An application was submitted to amend PD-83 in November of 2006 but was later administratively withdrawn. The applicants held two conceptual PD workshops on July 10, 2023, and February 10, 2025. This slide gives an overview of South Carolina state law regarding development agreements for which the proposed development agreement complies with. The Orange Hill Development Agreement parties would include Kiowa Resort Associates in Charleston County for a term of 10 years unless extended by agreement of both parties. Included in the agreement are proposed regulations to the plan development that accompanies the agreement, proposed modifications to modify ZLDR, which will only apply to this development, regarding tree protection and preservation, plan development, and road construction requirements, and the ability to have one conditional plat based on a wastewater treatment facility and the provisions of public water. The property shall provide the following per the agreement: design and construction of a left turn lane on River Road at the primary entrance, $1 million over five years to be held in escrow for the preservation of existing dwelling units, and the development of workforce dwelling units and affordable dwelling units. The applicants will pay, make payments up to a cap of $500,000 for development costs associated with sea island habitat for humanity affordable housing initiatives, will pay $215,000, approximately 50% the cost of a fully equipped ambulance to support public safety, and they will pay $450,000, approximately 50% of the cost of a new fire engine to support St. John's Fire District. The agreement includes a proposed change to the protected tree definition as shown on the screen, no proposed changes to the grand tree definition. The applicant is also requesting approval to remove or encroach upon grand and protected trees shown on Exhibit 14.1 through the development agreement without requiring the approval of BZA but requiring mitigation as follows: mitigation trees, mitigation required for trees removed but not encroached upon. Grade A and B trees mitigation must be on an inch-by-inch basis with a minimum of two-and-a-half inch caliber trees. Grade C trees, the zoning and planning director will determine if mitigation is required based on the condition of the tree. And mitigation trees may be planted on-site or off-site on Johns Island or payments can be made into a tree fund for planting trees on Johns Island. Trees encroached upon by more than 25% must be monitored by an arborist for a minimum of five years and if they do not survive, must be mitigated as previously mentioned. This table shows the summary of the grand and protected trees proposed to be removed and encroached upon through the development agreement as shown in Exhibit 14.1. Total grand trees to be removed: 312. Total grand trees to be encroached upon: 448. Trees that are not proposed for removal or encroachment through the development agreement, this would be trees not shown on Exhibit 14.1. They will require BZA approval for removal of grand and protected trees. Encroachments up to 35% of the protected area may be allowed when the zoning and planning director approves a tree preservation plan developed by a certified arborist. BZA approval will be required for encroachments of more than 35% of the protected area. And all other trees that are not grand or protected trees, the ARB may approve the removal, encroachment upon, replacement, protection, preservation, and mitigation requirements. The applicant is requesting to result, I'm sorry, to rezone the three subject parcels from the current PD-83A and AG-8 zoning districts to PD-191. Here is the property's location within the county. This is the future land use rural agricultural. And subject parcels 030 and 163 are currently zoned PD-83A. And parcel 163 is undeveloped and 030 is developed with the trap and skeet shooting range, which is allowed under the current PD-83A zoning. Parcel 120 is zoned rural agricultural and undeveloped. Adjacent parcels are unincorporated in unincorporated Charleston County and primarily zoned AGR and AG-8 with single-family residences, manufactured housing units, or are vacant. The properties are located in shaded X in X Flood Basement. This is the PD currently approved PD-83 master plan. It shows the 181 residential lots in orange, 100-foot buffers for Bow Hicket and River Road, perimeter buffers shown at 50 or 100. There is a reduction in the total number of units allowed if it's development and requires the tract to remain in a natural state. There are also allowances for a wastewater treatment plant to serve only the development and reverse osmosis plant, which is, which are both currently allowed. There are allowances for a farmer's market, restaurant, community garden, and greenhouse. And as far as short-term rentals, no more than 68 of the allowed 120 units can be commercial guesthouse short-term rental properties as shown on Exhibit 15.1. Special exception approval shall not be required, no more than four bedrooms per lot inclusive of an ADU on a lot, and an ARB approval letter is required stating approval of the STRP and parking plan enforced by the ARB. This slide shows other land uses that are allowed within the proposed zoning district. The applicant is proposing an overall mix of lots with minimum lot area ranges, reductions in minimum lot width, and reductions to a 75-foot buffer along Bow Hicket and River Road, and perimeter buffer reduction to 10 feet except where noted on the plan. Internal buffers are to be determined by the ARB. Remaining of the slide compares the dimensional standards including setbacks. All roads are private and the development will be gated. Parking must comply with the requirements of the modified ZLDR. Signs visible from Bow Hicket and River Road must comply with modified ZLDR and internal signage is determined by the ARB. Lighting must comply with the modified ZLDR and development will be completed in two phases. Special events on properties owned by the club that do not exceed a daily attendance of 750 do not require a permit. However, if it does exceed 750, it requires a permit and all development requires a letter of coordination from the ARB. The applicant provided responses to the approval criteria and staff and the planning commission recommended approval of the plan development request with the condition that the Johns Island Task Force be consulted when determining placement of off-site tree mitigation. Additionally, the Deputy County Administrator for Community Services Directorate has requested that the receiving entity of the fees to support housing initiatives be changed from the Charleston County Community Development and Revitalization Department to the Charleston County Commercial, I mean, to the Charleston County Community Services Directorate. This slide shows public input received for the planning commission meeting prior to today's public hearing and also prior to today's public hearing. We received 52 comments in support, eight comments in opposition, five general comments was received for the public hearing today. And this meeting was noticed as required.
Ms. Miller, you have done an outstanding job in presenting in this public hearing. And certainly, that was a mouthful and I understood everything from the first slide to the last slide with clarity, with precision, with specificity. And so, thank you for the manner in which you present at this county council meeting. Do we have any person signed up?
We do. We have nine people signed up. The first person is Anthony G. Bryant and then Mark Permer.
Okay. Before you, before I speak, I want to let everybody know that I did sue the FBI and Homeland Security regarding qualified immunity. And I want it to be known that I, that somebody in the $10 billion of Article III of the Constitution who formerly worked for you, who made a couple thousand dollars off of you, can dismiss, discredit, demonize, and destroy his reputation. Before I speak, there's no vexations in this body before I speak on this issue. I understand the plan development of magnolia, you did, with the bridge of nowhere. We ain't got no money on that yet. Union Pair got sold for $250 million, $24 million for IRA building, that's $270 million. We've got to tax these people. You got to look at this, they're all over again, it's like 2023, something like that. We got, we got real issues. We need real bread. This budget is great. They did a great job with the budget. We could add some money to it. So you got to tax every house, every blade of grass to make up the losses we going to face with this development going on. It's your obligation as a council to get us some more money. You need to get us some more bread. This, this plan development is a great idea, but ain't enough money to come back to the people. Now, I understand the FBI, Homeland Security work with, with people here, deal with people's speech. If you even put them in jail, probably, but I have no fear of that. Because I understand clearly those who became before me, like Kato, the Stoner Rebellion, fought for my freedom. He was dismissed, discredited, demonized, and destroyed, but I
Mark Permer, Ray Petlock.
Mr. Chairman, members of council and those in attendance, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Chairman, about the presentation. And we would have very little to add to the comprehensive and thorough presentation by Ms. Miller, but we do want to emphasize a couple of key elements of the proposal. By hitting the refresh button in terms of reflecting on the previous plan, the one that exists right now, we looked at the site with fresh eyes. And using the principles of designing with nature, we started first with the site attributes. What that led us to do was to reduce the overall density from 181 to 120 home sites that are in fact more modest in size. Additionally, we looked at eliminating 2.8 miles of roadway, again, coverage that's eliminated in deference to retention of more natural areas. Additionally, we examined the wastewater treatment plant, which is now a tertiary treatment plant that was used, will be used for irrigation of the golf course and the master drainage system. As a whole, this collectively reduces significantly the number of trees that were to be removed with the existing development. The existing site plan for the existing plan development, from 945 trees removed to 418. That's less than one tree per 1.7 acres that would be removed. We think that is to the benefit of not only this site but the context of the neighborhood that we're within. All the infrastructure is privately funded and will be maintained privately too, such as no demands on public resources. By shifting the road entrance to River Road, we believe that we haven't added to the complexity of traffic on Bow Hicket Road. We discovered that 60% of our workforce lives on Wadham Law or Johns Island. This will be an opportunity for employees of the company with the private club, much closer to their home. So in conclusion, we appreciate the opportunity to talk with you and we'll look forward to the future public meetings.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Ray Pantlick, Cindy Haynesworth.
Good evening. Let me thank the staff and all the department heads as well that have helped us to get the agreement to this point. In reviewing the information that we had sent the planning staff and upon which the planning commission had acted, as background, we had to survey over 4,000 trees over the 731 acres. And of those 4,000, over 3,000 are regulated by the county. And for those 3,000, we had to determine which trees are needed for removal, which trees needed to be encroached upon per the county regulations, and which trees would be unaffected. In reviewing both the graphic plans that we submitted as part of Exhibit 14.1 of this agreement and summary tables, we found a few anomalies between the two. And what we found specifically was there were 47 trees that were indicated as encroached but weren't reflected in the table. And vice versa, there were six trees that were indicated in the summary table to be encroached, but they weren't indicated on the plans. So we are going to be respectfully asking the council at its Planning and Public Works Committee meeting to revise one table in Section 14 of the agreement and to revise the Exhibit 14.1 to essentially correct this, these two anomalies. We are stressed that we're not increasing the number of removals. We're not effectively increasing the number of encroachments that we had projected. It's just that we wanted to make sure that all the plans and all the tables were correct. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cindy Haynesworth.
Hi, excuse me, hi. I live on Bow Hicket Road directly across from the 12-acre proposed maintenance facility. And my first concern is the drainage from the development. I understand it's, it's not going to change. The flow's not going to change. The quality's not going to change is what I've been told. So, but I've also been told that it's not going to be monitored. None of the flow or the quality of what goes into the Bow Hicket River is going to be monitored or measured. And I would think that would be a good proactive, wonderful thing to tell people, hey, we're taking extra steps to make sure it's good. My next concern is the decrease in the buffer along Bow Hicket Road. And I know that in February of 2020, just this February, the widening of Bow Hicket Road has been halted. It is not dead. It's been halted. So I want to know is, would y'all please make sure that like their maintenance facility, which is right across the road from me, is within, is the buffer big enough to take care of that? Because when they, when they widen Bow Hicket Road, it's gonna, is the plan is on the side of Orange Hill Development in that maintenance facility area. So I'm asking you, please, to look at that closely. Is the 75-foot buffer big enough, for example, the maintenance facility? Maybe they could just make that area bigger. But drainage, please measure and monitor and check out this buffer. Is it going to accommodate, because the road's going to be widened. We know that. Johns Island is exploding and it may not be, you know, in the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Haynes, Neil Haynes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to talk about the short-term rentals. I originally thought that out of the, there was 120 proposed dwellings, but now it's my understanding that 68 of those 120 dwellings will be short-term rentals. And then they said that they will become club members and I'm not sure how that's going to work. And I'm wondering if these short-term rentals will sit vacant while it's not in use. And will these dwellings be subject to the same taxes, rules, permitting, and regulations as the local residents who operate county-approved short-term rentals? Will they be subject to the same standards as the local residents, regulations, and taxes as per unit rented as well as living on the same property? The short-term rentals will exasperate the already overwhelming traffic on Johns Island roads and have another negative impact on Johns Island community. And right down the road, we have the Dunwin and they have 72 guest rooms for tourists. Orange Hill Development offers a separate turn lane into the development own lane, and that would be on River Road, but that's not sufficient for the failing infrastructure of roads on Johns Island. Next, I wanted to address the housing. Well, I don't want to do that. Traffic and infrastructure impact. Traffic on Johns Island is already unsustainable. It takes 15 minutes to exit Orange. I live on the 2800 block of Bow Hicket Road, a couple of blocks this way from the development. And it takes us 15 minutes to just get out on Bow Hicket Road. And then once you get to Maybank and River, it might take you an hour to get across the bridge. And if you're going across the Lime House, it's just as bad. Now, we don't have the 526 extension and supported by our already failing infrastructure on Johns Island.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Neil Haynes, John Marshner.
I'm the husband of the lady that just spoke. Thank you for listening to us. I would ask you to have an open ear. I was raised in a rural farming community in a different state. We came back to the States from living in the Caribbean for 10 years in 1993 and chose to live out on Johns Island because it represented a rural area to us. It was a rural area when we moved out there. It felt like a rural area. It is no longer that way. If I, I'm 76 years old. If I could move out of, out of Johns Island and off of Bow Hicket Road, I would, but I'm too old to do it now. And I ask that you guys reconsider what you're doing because it's not going to benefit anybody on Johns Island. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
John Marshner, John Zogar.
Good evening. Good to see everybody this evening. John Zogar, 5528 Frisco Lane, representing the Johns Island Task Force. We concur with the recommendation of the staff and the recommendation of the planning commission to approve this development. You know, it's been there since 2005, the original plan development, which gave them the best at right to put in the golf course and multiple houses. And so, all we're talking about now are the changes associated with that. What is being proposed now is far superior to what was originally proposed in 2005. You know, some of the key changes were talked about. The number of houses are reduced to by 61, that's 61 less houses. That's good from the standpoint of traffic. They much less impervious surfaces than they did before. And there's only limited access to Bow Hicket Road. Most, all, the primary access is on River Road. And we really want to thank the Kiowa Associates for their extensive outreach to the community. They did something that very few developers do. They actually listened and made changes. That almost never happens with developers. And so, we'd like to thank them for that. Some of the key changes, they added a left-hand turn lane on River Road. They didn't have to. The SC DOT said it wasn't required. They added it. All tree mitigation funds are going to be spent on Johns Island where the impact is. And almost a million dollars of their fees will go towards Johns Island, which is all fantastic stuff. These are all wins for Johns Island. We simply ask as they go forward that they really look at their design and make sure they minimize the number of trees that are impacted, either cut down or encroached upon. And they've said they will do that. And then finally, the other thing I'd just like to say is that, you know, Johns Island still is rural. 80% of it is outside the urban growth boundary. Traffic is bad, but 80% of it is still rural. And I'd like the county to consider not allowing any additional golf courses on Johns Island or Waimala Island. I think that would help towards the character of the island. Thank you very much.
Trenton Walker.
Good evening. Trenton Walker, 66 Hazel Street. I, like the rest of Kiowa Resort Associates team, want to thank staff for all the time and effort they put in it to help us come up with a much better development agreement. We took their comments to heart and made a lot of changes. I just want to touch on two things that have been addressed. First is the buffer. The required buffer along Bow Hicket is 75 feet, which is what the ordinance requires. But if you look at it, in places, it will be 300 feet. We think the average width of the buffer is going to be substantially more than 75 feet, more like 150, 200 feet. On the water quality, the water will be captured. It will be, there will be much less being released and the engineered stormwater plan has been approved by DEHEC. We're going to comply with the county stormwater standards, the current stormwater manual, which is very exacting. Last thing is short-term rentals. These are not going to be available to the public, only members of the club. They probably will not be used all the time. The traffic count, the traffic study that was implemented or the traffic study that was delivered counted those as full-time residents. So there's not going to be any impact above what the traffic impact analysis showed. Thank you very much and we appreciate your consideration of our request.
That's it.
Thank you very much. FY26 Budget Public Hearing.
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 10 at 6:30 PM on the operating budget ordinance for fiscal year 2026.
Anyone signed up?
Anthony G. Bryant.
All right.
I've spoken on the budget for 10 years. And when I was on the BZA, I spoke on it as well. I don't know what changed, but I did do, I did do a FOI request to Pam Bondi, the Department of Justice, and also to SLED regarding my concerns in the budget. First of all, I think the budget's excellent. I think that we got a budget surplus, which is good. It's always good to add more money, you know, that's a good thing. But I'm trying to figure out how you going to add more money. Because I think you're in conflict with your zoning and this money. I think we got to reevaluate the favors we gave out and hit people with some, with some fees or something. Mouse Corner did a development fee up there, Mouse Corner. They trying to get them some money. They, they may have got courage. He ain't scared at all. He asking for this bread up front. And I think right now, we at that point where we got to start asking for, you can't come for Johns Island or you can't come for, you have to, this is a county board. What about North Charleston? And the city of North Charleston? What about, what about us? And then the city of Charleston left. You know, we can't just focus on North, was it North Mount Pleasant and wherever else it is. Some people, some people have got their rent at 50% above at value. So at some point, you got to start excavating some money for some people to get that budget up to billion dollars, or extra money. You could do things with an extra $400 million, but you can't do nothing extra with no extra. We need some extra. So we're wrong with asking some extra. I mean, because Kiowa Island got a lot of extra. You know what I mean? North Charleston needs some extra. Pleasant needs some extras. Why we can't grab some extra? You know what I mean? I appreciate their proposal and that's good. But hey, they're top rated golf course, but what they got, the PGA Championship? How much cost to go in to play there? We need some extra bread.
Thank you so much. 1CFY26 Special Purpose District Budget Public Hearing.
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 10 at 6:30 PM on the operating budget ordinances for June 10th, at 6:30 PM on the operating budget ordinances for fiscal year 2026 for Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission, Cooper River Parks and Playground, North Charleston District, St. Andrews Parks and Playground, St. John's Fire District, and St. Paul's Fire District.
Anyone signed up?
Mr. Bryant.
All right.
Anthony G Bryant, President AG Bryant, Inc., I want to make that known. As a minority-owned business, and that from, what derived from the Parks Commission was a referral by somebody to the FBI on a minority-owned group of business owners in my community. So the referral came from, from the County Park and Recreation to the FBI. I, if you did a so rights complaint to the FBI and Obama, under anybody, it didn't respond back to you as an individual citizen. For some strange reason, that went down. You had two former council chairperson, now willing to plead guilty on arrest and judgment by the feds, and US Attorney, now not US Attorney, now the Director of Corrections is over that. So the correction director over the database basically is over that. So the premise of the investigation by the FBI on black folk and minority-owned businesses is from the county. So, so within the budget, what are you going to do to provide the Department of Justice integrity to come and talk to appointed officials and elected officials about doing business? Because I want to make sure that you don't go to jail for giving somebody a phone call $400. We got to be real. Black folk has gotten the political business. You are the political business. So at the end of the day, a lot of mistakes have been made and incumbent upon those of conscience. And I'll tell Kalon Middleton, I know about you. You know how I know about you? My daddy went to Burke 63. Mom went to Burke 64. Raised by Burke folk. Know you. Know your character off top. You ain't got a question. That's how you got to the top so fast, you went to Burke. But at the end of the day, we got to be about the business of taking care of people in advance and don't go to jail. You shouldn't show up on an appointed board and go to prison, or elected, go to prison. And all the way we find out, they come and tell us, oh, you stay
Thank you so very much. Public comments?
We have three people signed up. The first person's Kathleen Duncan, and then Mr. Bryant and Ms. Norris.
Please state your name and your address.
Kathleen Duncan, 1745 Mulmar Street. This is my third time in front of you all. I appreciate it. I am not dressed appropriately either, Councilman Darby, but I'm on my way to a swim meet for my grandchildren. I'm here again regarding the zoning issue at Mulmar and Orange Grove, and I believe that each of you received an email from me this week. I did hear back from Councilman Moody. Thank you. I am here not to, I am not here to argue about my house or whatever. I am here because it is dangerous. Ms. Honeycutt, Councilman Honeycutt, said that the developer would be responsible for the transportation issue there? No, he's not. The South Carolina Department of Transportation will take that over. We don't have speed humps, and we don't have speed limit signs, so my, my faith in them is not great. But if you have gone up and down Orange Grove Road, you will see that Mulmar is here. Across the road, five feet down, is the first intersection, so here we have competing arguments already on who gets to go. I almost got hit tonight on my way to the meeting. And the next person will tell you about other accidents. The driveway of this property, these two lots, dumps right into the middle of that. That's a, we can't put a doorway stop. We can't put a roundabout there. We can't do anything to fix what is already there. But I cannot stress enough that we should not put more houses there. Traffic-wise, it is dangerous. The bus stop, the children, the people coming out of our street, the people coming in the street. I mentioned in the email, it is like a challenge. It is playing chicken as to who's going to go when. You don't know. People stop to be nice. Other people don't stop. They block our street. Please consider, come on, look at the traffic yourself and see if you think that, I know my time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not against the affordable housing. I'm not against it, as Councilman Moody mentioned at the last meeting, somewhere else where there isn't that problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Please, please, consider the children.
Next.
Anthony Bryant, Trill Norris.
I want to say something nice. EMS is unbelievable. They came by before my birthday and took my mother to the hospital, and I want to thank 911 and all those folks who came through to look out for her and made my birthday very well. But, but, but she would want me to be for those who, who, who need help. And the Homeland Security FBI Task Force, in my opinion, if, if you an innocent citizen and with qualified immunity, you have 200 people with guns, or I don't care where the warrant is, but what if they had a bloodbath? They would pay for it. County would have paid for it. State would have paid for it. Feds would have paid for it. Who is going to pay for it? You had a warrant since November. You could have handled that better. You a law enforcement, you know what warrant sign can do. And if you got innocent people around, they can be done. You would put out too much money for dead people on this council. Now, the issue is, do we have a right to oppose things in this country? And we can't oppose, let me not can't oppose, so I don't go to jail. What's being proposed right now by Tim Scott with a trillion-dollar deficit that he said he failed math? Well, I don't know if fiscal service has got a deficit yet. I'm trying to figure out that. How you be a fiscal service got a debt of trillion dollars? He did fail math, and that, we didn't fail math for the store? I don't know. I know I didn't fail math, but I can't counsel a conservative of money if it's a deficit. I can't figure that out yet. But what can happen to you is you can be wrongfully accused of crime you did not commit. A death penalty's real. It's very real. Wrongful accusation can be death penalty. Okay, understand this. This is real. Any one man wrong, a woman wrong, something they didn't do is an error. How can you be a Christian? And I still can't figure out why I go to church and support that, because Christ said forgive me not the way they do them, and we all act. I still haven't gotten around to that yet. And I'm supposed to be a conservative, I still. I don't believe in a death penalty at all. I don't see what [bell dings] with the Homeland Security Task Force, we have more crime, not less.
All right.
Trill Norris.
Good evening. My name is Trill Norris, and I live at 1737 Mulmar Street. I was at the last meeting, and I have some questions for the council. Why was Mr. Hurdle allowed to speak at the last meeting when it was a no-comment meeting? This was so unfair to the rest of us. Mr. Hurdle states he plans to build and live in the house on the property. What's to stop him from not doing that? I've heard that he's backed out of that. Of the council members that voted in favor of the rezoning, how many have traveled Orange Grove Road at rush hour or during school hours? Is a real danger to them to add more traffic, especially if it spills out on Mulmar Street? Ask yourself, would you like this in your neighborhood? We have dangerous issues on the corner of Mulmar and Orange Grove. The street offset to Mulmar is a constant issue with people on both sides trying to get out onto Orange Grove Road. It is a game of chicken. We take our lives in our hands. Our kids are on the corner. They're blocking the view. We've got traffic here. We have traffic going this way. Nobody lets us out. You close your eyes, you take a left, and you pray like hell. Sorry. Let's not add more traffic at the same intersection. The people living on Mulmar Street don't have fancy PowerPoint presentations or understand zoning or building codes. We are just a neighborhood who we thought where we were buying into an established area with no chance of more houses going up. This is our neighborhood. We all work together to make it our own. Now you're going to let a builder come in, make his money, and move on. I strongly urge this council to rethink the rezoning area. Thank you.
Thank you. Freedom of Information Act?
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Item two has been removed. Item two has been, has been removed from the agenda. If you would allow me to continue my statement. Thank you so much, and so we will consider those at another time. It gives me great pleasure to recognize a 2025 National Network Hero Award, and so at this time, we recognize John Rath, oh, properly moved.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? Thank you. And so it gives me great pleasure to recognize John Rathbun from Pavement Preservation and Recycling Alliance to present Mackenzie Kelly, who is here with her parents, with the 2025 Network Hero Award, a national recognition, and we are so very proud of you. Let's give her a hand in advance.
Good evening, and thank you for the invitation and your hospitality. I am John Rathbun. I represent Cutler Repaving as Vice President. I served as past president of the Asphalt Recycling and Reclaiming Association, and I am on the Advisory Board of the National Center for Pavement Preservation at Michigan State University. But I'm here tonight on behalf of the Asphalt Recycling and Reclaiming Association and the Pavement Preservation and Recycling Alliance to honor and to present the inaugural Network Hero Award to Charleston County's own, Mackenzie Kelly. Mackenzie had the vision and foresight to bring sustainable technology to Charleston County to preserve and extend the life of the county's existing asphalt pavements by recycling them in place. While Cutler Repaving has been recycling asphalt pavements for 60 years, this project was a first for the South Carolina Low Country. Our partners in this project included Banks Construction, Peak Safety, Red Electrical, Lynnfield Hauling, Ergon Asphalt Emulsions, and Terricon Consulting. But make no mistake, this project included, but make no mistake, the driving force for this project's and its success was Mackenzie and her Charleston County Public Works team that worked diligently guiding the success of the project. But it wasn't just the recycling project for which she is receiving this recognition. The Network Hero had to demonstrate success in achieving network-level project, progress over time utilizing a broad array of pavement preservation treatments. Since 2017, 2017, she and her team have increased road miles treated, expanded, can't read, can't read my own writing here, expanded, expanded their pavement preservation toolbox, achieved buy-in from her elected officials, and enhanced transparency and public trust. Just to decide on that public trust for a second. As I drove down Patriots Point the morning we started recycling that road, I noticed these road signs, these yard signs, in the right of way. I'd never seen them before, and I slowed down and looked, and it said, I know, you know you can recycle glass, plastic, and paper. I bet you didn't know you could recycle the road you're driving on. I've been in this business for 48 years. I have never, in my life, seen public communication like that. That is how you educate the public and gain their trust, and that is one of the reasons she's standing here before you tonight. Just as a cherry on top of the rest of her career, she serves on the Board of the Southeastern Pavement Preservation Partnership and started the Asphalt Maintenance Roundtable that she serves on the board. It gives me great pleasure, on behalf of ARA and PPRA, to congratulate Mackenzie. I know your family, friends, and colleagues in Charleston County are extremely proud of your leadership culminating in this prestigious award. Congratulations.
Mackenzie, we are so very proud of you. Mr. Adams came up just before the council meeting noting your resilience story, your perseverance, and just the trailblazer that you are, the hidden gem in Charleston County. And so we just, we're very thankful for everything that you bring to us. Let's give her another round of applause. Her family?
I think they better represent.
Third reading of ordinances for A fiscal year 26 county budget.
An ordinance providing for the levy of taxes for corporate purposes of Charleston County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2025, here and after referred to as fiscal year 2026, making appropriations from the general fund and other funds of Charleston County for such purposes, and further providing for the levy of taxes for corporate purposes of Charleston County, including the Allandon McLollanville Consolidated Fire Protection District, East Cooper Fire District, Northern Charleston County Fire District, West St. Andrews Fire District, and Trident Technical College for fiscal year 2026, providing for appropriations from such special funds created for the purposes of the Allandon McLollanville Consolidated Fire Protection District, East Cooper Fire District, Northern Charleston County Fire District, West St. Andrews Fire District, and Trident Technical College, in order to supply the necessary functions of the units, providing for budget control of the appropriations by Charleston County Council and the Charleston County Administrator, making provisions for the fiscal affairs of Charleston County, and providing for the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount up to $100 million for Charleston County, and up to $1 million for the Allandon McLollanville Consolidated Fire Protection District. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Item 4B, Special Purpose District Budgets, third reading.
An ordinance approving the budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and directing the auditor of Charleston County to levy the necessary millage, and the treasurer to collect taxes for the Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission, the Cooper River Park and Playground Commission, the North Charleston District, the St. Andrews Parish Parks and Playground Commission, the St. John's Fire District, and the St. Paul's Fire District, and providing for the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount up to $3 million for the Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission, up to $1,100,000 for the St. Andrews Parks and Playground Commission, and up to $1,500,000 for the St. John's Fire District. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Our consent agenda, 5A phased engineering design. Two approval, A and B. All right. All those in favor of A and B, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers nay? The ayes have it. 5C, abandoned building sites. Move for committee recommendations.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay.
All right. Our committee recommendations.
All for committee, A, B, A through D.
Second. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Okay, discussion. Vice Chair Kibrowski.
I'm sorry, it was 6D included in what you said, or did
Yes, sir.
B, yes.
So we haven't voted on that yet.
You're having discussion right now.
I wanted to make sure. I thought a lot about this, and I understand I may not win on this, but I'd like to propose as an alternative, we divide the money equally to disaster relief, we do that, and also for drainage. I mean, each one of us know, and I like to say that I lived through Hurricane Hugo, as many of us did, and had the feeling of losing everything you owned, you know, that doesn't leave you. And going on Owl Palms and Solvins Island, and it was like silent spring. There was no sound of any living thing. There was homes in the road, no people. And I think that we all know at some point it's going to happen again. And just like I read to my six grandchildren, the grasshopper and the ant, I think it's incumbent upon us to prepare for disaster and put the money there in a drainage. And I think in terms of the visitors, bro, I think most people that live here would think that we have enough tourism, and I don't think that if we have to choose between a building for, to promote tourism, or putting it for disaster relief, I'd rather put it there. And those would be my two priorities, is to split the money between them. I realize the ATAX money, that the lawsuit, if we had had it, the money would have went to them, but this is, in a sense, a settlement of a lawsuit that gives us funding that we wouldn't have, and I think that we should use this as an opportunity. The primary responsibility we have on county council is the safety of the people that live here, and I think that's what we ought to prioritize. Thank you.
All those in favor, let it
Chairman, so to give them a chance to vote on D, I'll say A, B, and C, and then let's separate D and come back, but I'll approve.
Look at that. Amendment.
wouldn't have, and I think that we should use this as an opportunity, the primary responsibility we have on county council is the safety of the people that live here, and I think that's what we ought to prioritize. Thank you.
All those in favor, let it, yes.
So, to give them a chance to vote on D, I'll say A, B, and C, and then let's separate D and come back, but I'll approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye to A, B, and C. Opposers nay.
Move for approval on 6D.
All right. Move for approval on 6D. Let's do a roll call vote, if that would be sufficient.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Our consent agenda, 5A, phased engineering design.
Move for approval A and B.
All right. All those in favor of A and B, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. The ayes have it. 5C, abandoned building sites.
Move for committee recommendations.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay.
Aye.
All right. Our committee recommendations.
Move for committee, A, B, A through D.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Discussion. Vice Chair Kibrowski.
And I'm sorry, it was 6D included in what you said, or did?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, we, we haven't voted on that yet.
You're having discussion right now.
I wanted to make sure. I thought a lot about this, and I understand I may not win on this, but I'd like to propose as an alternative, we divide the money equally to disaster relief, that we do that, and also for drainage. I mean, each one of us know, and I like to say that I lived through Hurricane Hugo, as many of us did, and had the feeling of losing everything you owned, you know, that doesn't leave you. And going on Owl Palms and Solvans Island, and it was like Silence, bringing, there was no sound of any living thing. There was homes in the road, no people. And I think that we all know at some point it's going to happen again. And this is like I read to my six grandchildren, the grasshopper and the ant, I think it's incumbent upon us to prepare for disaster and put the money there in a drainage. And I think in terms of the visitors, Peral, I think most people that live here would think that we have enough tourism, and I don't think that if we have to choose between a building for, to promote tourism, or putting it for disaster relief, I'd rather put it there. And those would be my two priorities, is to split the money between them. I realize the ATAX money, that the lawsuit, if we had had it, the money would have went to them, but this is, in a sense, a settlement of a lawsuit that gives us funding that we wouldn't have, and I think that we should use this as an opportunity, the primary responsibility we have on county council is the safety of the people that live here, and I think that's what we ought to prioritize. Thank you.
All those in favor, let it, yes.
So, to give them a chance to vote on D, I'll say A, B, and C, and then let's separate D and come back, but I'll approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye to A, B, and C. Opposers nay.
Move for approval on 6D.
All right. Move for approval on 6D. Let's do a roll call vote, if that would be sufficient.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Our consent agenda, 5A, phased engineering design.
Move for approval A and B.
All right. All those in favor of A and B, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. The ayes have it. 5C, abandoned building sites.